All right, good evening. We're going to go ahead and begin tonight's study session. We have two items on the agenda. And the first is kind of a project update on a variety of projects. And Mr. O'Leary, our Director of Public Works, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I'm just going to do one, and then I think there's other staff members that are going to step up and do other updates for you. It will be brief. My co-presenter is Paul DeAndre. If you haven't met Paul, best dressed guy in the room.
For sure.
Paul is one of our capital projects engineers, and we load him up with lots of projects. This is one that he has been managing since the beginning. Lots of time goes into these. So happy to present on behalf of several departments, actually Public Works, Transit, of course Parks Department has a major element in this, and Public Safety, Police and Fire are also going to be housed for fleet maintenance in one of these facilities. This is our artist's rendering. We like this drawing a lot. But so basically, this is North Base. I'll show you another map here in a minute. We call it North Base off of North Flood Street and DaVinci. So what you're looking at here in the foreground is the new transit maintenance facility, 20,000 square foot building. Then next to it would be the new Parks Maintenance Facility, 16,000 square foot building. And again, all of this is solving lots of different problems. I'll talk a little bit more in a minute about that. But problem number one is we have nowhere to maintain our new buses that we inherited two years ago, so this will be a place to do that. We really have nowhere to maintain our largest fire trucks, so now we will have a place to do that. And of course, Parks is having to relocate their maintenance facility from where it's been for many, many years, decades probably, at Reeves Park to make room for the Norman Forward Reeves Park project. Just a quick overview of North Base. You all have been there, but you have been in this northern portion, kind of a light blue area where all the old Navy buildings are. This is where our fleet maintenance building is today. That's about 15 acres up there. The city acquired this property in, I think, 1998, if I'm close on that anyway, from the University of Oklahoma, when they wanted us to move out of South Base. So we were at a bunch of old buildings with leaky roofs down at South Base, and they wanted to use that for a weather center and other things like that. So we moved from South Base to North Base and been operating there ever since. This southern portion, south of the road, this is DaVinci Street here, this is a vacant, or was a vacant parcel of land, about 10 acres. And so when we were looking for a place to put all these new facilities, we looked to the cheap land first. This is the land we've already owned and have owned for many years. Again, Flood Street is here. This is a new stormwater detention basin, so we are meeting or actually exceeding all of our own stormwater requirements for our development here. Proud to announce that. New parking facilities with CNG connections and electric vehicle connections, chargers for our new electric buses. This is going to be our fleet maintenance for transit and emergency vehicles, primarily fire. And this is the park maintenance. Over here in the green are a couple of drain projects. We still hope to do these. This here is the current fire training tower. You can see that today. They've had that there for many years. They do training there. I think eventually the chief wants to replace that with something better and at a different location. This here is what we hope to be a future city wash facility. We do not own a wash facility. We're kind of an unusual city that way. We have nowhere to wash our vehicles. We have to take them to commercial operations or hire people to come in. And given that we wash our buses every night, six nights a week, we need a place to wash the buses. And so we're hoping to be able to build a wash facility here in the next year or two, once we get the financing for that. And then this will be a fire storage, fire apparatus storage facility. This is Fire Station Seven and the EOC here today. So just a quick review of kind of where we've been together. A lot of this starts back in October of 2015 with the Norman Forward election. Really great turnout, 72% voter approval of the Norman Forward program. And in that was the relocation of the Parks Maintenance Facility. So that project kind of was born in 2015. I suspect Jason would have liked to get to that sooner than now, but we're glad to be moving in that direction. And as soon as we're in here, he can demolish that building and get started on the Reeves Park Norman Forward project down there for baseball and softball. Then our lives changed in July of 2019, and we took on the transit system from the University of Oklahoma. That was our first month of operation, so just over two years ago. But we did that on kind of a wing and a prayer because we have nowhere to maintain our buses. We don't own our own transfer station, so all of these things we're kind of building. And this is that solution to maintenance of the buses that we were very fortunate to find funding pretty quickly. So the next month after we took over the operation and kind of got it stood up, we began looking at what would a maintenance facility look like, and what would it cost, and how can we put that together? A year later, we were able to solve that gap, and that $5.1 million FTA CARES grant was really a gift from God for us. And we were able to allocate or appropriate that money to this facility, which made up the funding difference. In October of '20, you all awarded the contract for this construction to Flint Co. Paul's going to talk about a few of those things here in a moment on the site. A month later, we issued the notes for receipt and got started, and we are hoping to move into that facility next month. So we're hoping we can come back here and can have a nice ribbon cutting for that facility in November of this year, 2021. We're hoping. Again, weather permitting, it could spill over into December, but we're hoping for November. So I'll ask Paul just to mention a few things that you can see on the photos. If you haven't been out there, let me know. Happy to take you out and show you kind of where we are today.
Yeah, thanks, Sean. So kind of got some pictures, just kind of walk you through what we've been through. This one on the left is kind of real early construction before we'd poured the slabs on the first building, just getting the underground plumbing and everything in. The one on the right is the Parks Building as we started putting up the structural steel. This next kind of phase of the project was actually kind of an adventure, getting the skin on the building in the middle of a pandemic where steel shortages and we're building a metal building. So we had some delays, but it's really a credit to our construction manager, ADG, and the contractor Flint Co. that they spent a lot of countless hours in working on the schedule to make sure we're still meeting that end of the year out date so we can get out of OU's facility for the public safety and transit maintenance.
Can I jump in and just on the record say thank you to the University of Oklahoma? Because they kept extending that and giving us that flexibility to not rush and build what we want and what we need at the same time. So they've been flexible, and Eric Conrad has just been wonderful to work with.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. We should have mentioned that, that from the beginning, they've allowed us to transition on facilities, transfer stations, everything. So yeah, impressive.
So you can see on the top left there is the Parks Building getting its walls put on. The Transit and Public Safety Building, you can tell the difference because of the clear story up here, windows eventually in later pictures down here. So you can just kind of see how that progressed. That was really the big thing to get us out of the weather season last spring and winter with the two weeks of negative temperatures that we never experience here. So once we got that skin dried in, we got to really move on the meat of the building. These kind of span up until now. You can see in this picture here, we have the framing going on. That's in the Transit Building. Then the Parks Building also getting there with their mezzanine up there. These are the office areas getting all the interior. These are more recent here in the last couple of months, getting all the sheet rock and everything and all the finishes put on the walls. They're working on that right now. This area is the south end of the Transit and Public Safety. This area here stores our NAPA parts room where they keep track of everything that we use. Over in this area is all of our lubrication equipment. You can see just right here, this is a hose reel. They're just getting all that equipment installed where each bay will end up having hoses so they can just pull down there. And it's all programmed in from the back room, and it sends the right amount of oil to the right bus. And they're pretty high-tech. I was pretty impressed with that when we saw it. And then this is just, this was taken about a week ago. It started pouring the parking lot outside and digging the detention pond. This parking lot now has, they've almost got the entire East Parking Lot for it in just a week. They're really kicking it into gear and getting that site work done. And these are kind of snapshots. Again, these are all last week. One thing I will note, the Parks Building here now has garage doors just like this does, so that's all dried in now and ready to go. So that's kind of where we're at.
So just kind of wrap up. I kind of enjoyed this slide what Paul put together. This sort of speaks to the way we do business in the city of Norman in my experience here. It's never easy financing anything here. And we have gotten really good over many, many years at aggregating lots of different funding sources to get projects done. You all have seen that. You're going to continue to see that. Jason is doing that with a lot of the Norman Forward projects. So this one is a classic example, $10.7 million total project, 5.1 from FTA, so federal fund through the CARES Act, 2.6 from your own capital fund, which we aggregated a bunch of projects that closed out last year to do that, $870,000 from PST, which was approved in 2014 for a fire storage and maintenance facility. So we've been working since 2014 to get that put together, believe it or not. And then $2 million from Norman Forward for the Reeves Park, the Parks Maintenance Project. We threw in a little bit of ADA funding to make sure that we did a thorough ADA evaluation and make sure all these sites and buildings are fully ADA accessible. And then actually put in an ACOG grant for the electric vehicle charging stations. There's one more grant we forgot to mention here. There's another ACOG CMAC grant for the CNG extensions into the site. So it's just amazing, but this kind of speaks to how we conduct our business, and we're proud of it. This takes a lot more to manage, so Paul and ADG are spending a lot of time managing federal and state grants. And it's just crazy what it takes to be able to spend this money, but it's worth it. We're going to get it done. So I think that's it. So we'll end there. Take any questions. All the departments are represented here, I think.
Councilor Studley.
I'm just curious, you mentioned there was another grant. How much was that grant?
The other one, the CNG grant, I'm remembering about $220,000, something like that. Sound about right, Taylor? About $220,000. And that allowed us to extend our CNG underground infrastructure into these parking spaces. If you haven't been out there to see it, when our CNG vehicles come in at night, they hook up to the fuel. It's a slow fill system. So by the time they get back in the morning to go to work, the vehicle's full and off they go. So we don't spend any time fueling vehicles. It's done at night.
Is the current building that you're in, will you be able to add something on to that for a wash station, or are you trying to do like a separate building for a wash station?
We're proposing, appreciate that question, we're proposing a separate building on this site where I showed you there. It really works well with the configuration of both the Parks and the Transit and Public Safety Buildings, particularly focused on the buses. FTA requirements are very stringent about cleanliness and sanitation systems. We literally wash every bus every night. We clean every railing, every seat, every night on every system. And that means we've got a nighttime crew starting at about 6:00 PM, Taylor. Sometimes they work all night long. Sometimes they're done about 2:00 in the morning. But having to go off-site to wash a bus is a real hassle. We need to be able to do it there.
Is that what, you guys are taking them someplace?
Right now, OU has a wash facility, so we're at the OU facility. It's wonderful, and we're able to do it right there, but this one will not. So we're actively searching for funding to do that project. I think we're going to use some more, some other federal funding, we hope, and aggregate some other sources to do. This would be a citywide wash facility. Right now, we have nowhere to wash trash trucks or buses or anything else. So we're hoping to bring that back in the next couple of months.
Do you know how many bays you plan on having in the wash facility?
Two. One indoor, one kind of slightly outdoor. And I think we're looking, Paul, at about $800,000 to $1 million for the project.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, one of the two bays is automatic, and the other is a manual wash bay where they can get in with some of the bigger trucks and get down inside really well.
Councilor Hall?
Just as a follow-up, will we be able to continue to use the wash facility at OU for the foreseeable future?
Really won't be practical, Councilor. It's five miles, six miles south of it. We really need to have the buses in one place.
No, 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 I understand that, but will we have the ability to use that until we get another plan in place, until we get our own?
I'm sure they would let us, but again, to have one person drive 28 buses south and back, it's just, I don't think that's going to be practical. We're looking more at a contractor coming in and doing onsite portable washing instead. That makes more sense. It's cheaper and it's safer.
Well, did I misunderstand you that that's what we're doing right now is using the wash facility?
We're doing all of the maintenance there as well.
Okay, gotcha.
The buses are all parked there all day long.
That makes more sense. Okay, I understand. Thank you.
You bet.
Missed that little key piece.
You bet.
Any other questions? All right, I just thought it'd be great to get an update for you guys on that facility. I drive by it every day, and I've promised my seven-year-old he gets to come with me to the ribbon cutting because he has been watching it as well. So, all right, what's next?
Oh, boy.
And while he's getting settled, don't forget on October 23rd, from 9:00 to noon at Reeves Park, we have an electronics recycling event. So don't throw away. Recycle them.
Okay, thank you for having us. I want to thank Brett for planning and budgeting this project, and Nathan has been oversighting the construction of it. And now Michelle's new to our team, and she's going to help us get it staffed and operational.
That's my hope.
That's right, so I'm going to let her talk about it tonight.
I talked pretty quickly. I did make quite a few slides, so jump in if you have questions or, you know. All right, so our lovely, I'll talk a little bit about the past. I'm going to talk about the facility itself. I'll talk about what our plan is, and then some thoughts for the future. First, what did we used to do? Well, we used to do multi-pollutant one-day events. The first one was in April of 1999. The original budget was $75,000. Of course, it cost more than that. It was actually closer to $100,000, 96, 8, 96, 2, sorry. Staffed with volunteers who had one hour of training the night before the event, served that first event, almost 1,400 cars. 1,500 households came and brought their pollutants. That's almost or more than 63 tons of chemicals that were removed, almost 1,000 tires, and 600 pounds of batteries. That's that first event. Pretty impressive. Now, here are the numbers for the 20 years of events that happened. I want to point out especially, oop, I did the wrong thing. I want to point out, yeah.
All right, that was fun.
That if you, you'll see it. The total removed is over 2 million pounds of chemicals. That's what we've taken out over the 20 years. So that's really impressive. And then for pharmaceuticals, we only started picking those up in 2013. 370 gallons of pharmaceuticals. And you can see that it's, the gallons are a combination mixture of things. These are just fun pictures from old events throughout the years. But unfortunately, just like these unwitting student divers, Brett especially, Brett Scoville, noticed that the volunteers really didn't have the skill set or the experience to handle, I mean, these are really seriously dangerous situations, traffic, chemicals, all kinds of things that could have hurt them. So, you know, that's when the idea of maybe we need our own place came into being. And it moved pretty quickly because not only are we safer, but we're also going to provide a better service, which is what Norman really is about, right? So a place to call our own. First, you guys approved the contract with Studio Architecture for the design, and that was July 2019. It cost about $82,300 for that design. The design was completed, and the bid was opened in December 2020, and you awarded the contract to Landmark Construction Group for $1.4 million in January 2021. So not bad in the timing, if you will. I mean, it went pretty quickly, the design and the contract awarding, so that's great. This is the actual facility. This is the artist's rendition. It's nice. It's coming along just like it looks in this picture, except for you can see the transfer station in the background and the real place. These are the schematics for the floor. This is the top look. We have storage in the mezzanine, so there's stairs where we can have supply storage. This is great. Keeps it out of the way of the staff and the clients who are coming in. We'll have an entryway swap store. This is cool. This is where people bring in products that are still usable, and so our residents can come in and take them and use them at home. And so instead of throwing them away or doing something else with them, they're reused, and that's great. We also have an office for our employee and a break room, and this is the direction that they will, the clients will drive through. Here are some more pictures of the current, this was two days ago. This is the front of the facility. I'm so excited. Hopefully, you'll notice right here, we have two stormwater rain barrels. Thank you so much to the Stormwater Division because they donated those. We also have, as you can see, some secondary containment inside. Those are sumps that are separated. They're chemical safe sumps, so if there is a spill inside, it's contained and we can deal with it appropriately. This is our flammable storage area. That's so we don't blow our people up, right? So that's kind of nice, too. And this is just a view from the mezzanine. I had to go upstairs and take a view down. You can see, well, that's Nathan, right there.
You're over there.
I don't know, he's not here.
He's over there.
That's Nathan. This is George from the architecture firm, and this is our superintendent Patrick from Landmark. And so we meet every week now to talk about the progress of the facility, and it's moving, moving right along. Diggedoo. We did get two grants, so this is really exciting. We got two grants from DEQ to help us equip the facility. And the first one was in 2020. We got $55,000 for a bulb crusher, a paint can crusher, and a forklift and a charger. And these are all pieces of equipment that we will use in the facility. We got one in 2021, another large equipment grant, this time for $25,301. It was spill containment equipment, so that's that pallet you saw in the previous picture. We also have spill kits and utility carts to help us move the chemicals from the cars to the management area, ramps. We got a kiosk for sharps that we can collect. We got an aerosol disposal system, so we can take aerosol cans. And we also got two e-waste events that we got to do in 2021, a spring and a fall. So that was really exciting.
That was so sexy.
So what's our vision and our method? Here's our vision, and I put this quote, because I got it from Brett, and I'm going to use his name a lot because he really has been a big piece of this, besides paying for it. And it's true, you know, this is our vision, a safe, consistent method for collection, reuse, and disposable, disposal of household hazardous waste. And that's really it, right? Safe and consistent, especially for our residents. What more, you know, could we use? To effect that, we went, we, meaning me and a couple of my staff, we went to visit a few of the, well, there are three in the state, all three of the household hazardous waste facilities in the state. I will say that they were also visited during the design phase, too. Let me throw a huge shout-out of thanks to Oklahoma City, Midwest City, and Tulsa, because those three communities have bent over backwards to help us out while we're doing ours. And all the lessons learned and the information that we got, it was fantastic. This is Oklahoma City. It's more of a fancy building like ours, and I say that, I feel like ours is a fancy building. It's beautiful. It's going to be streamlined and well-run. Midwest City has a great setup, too. Theirs is just in the back of one of their maintenance facilities. It still works. And Tulsa, just they reutilized an old building and turned it into their household hazardous waste facility. So I think, though, what we're going to be looking at becoming is going to be a hybrid between Midwest City and Tulsa. Oklahoma City has a huge staff. They have a huge service area, so their facility is, you know, state-of-the-art all the time, et cetera. And ours is going to be more, just because of our size of population and our service area, a little more like these two. So what's our plan? Because that's big, right? We need to know, how are we going to operate it? So our plan is to do 30-minute appointment slots, and that way a resident can call in, say, hey, I want to come on this day, and we have a 30-minute appointment slot. We say, great, come on in. And that will give us time to not only remove the materials from their vehicle, but also allow that employee to process and manage them during that 30 minutes, so that we have enough time to keep getting residents through. We plan to have year-round operations, you know, January through December is our plan. Every other Saturday, we'd like to be open every other Saturday so that people who work Monday through Friday can still make use of the facility. Customers will enter through the drive, it's a drive-through building. They'll enter, they'll stop, our staff will They'll enter, they'll stop, our staff will remove the materials, they'll manage them. The customer will leave and then the packaging, et cetera, will occur. We're planning to have a soft opening for employees. And I say that, it's very important. Everyone of the different facilities that we talked to stressed this highly because that way it gives us a couple of weeks with technical assistance to work out any kinks that we have before we open to the rest of the residents so that they can have a nice, efficient process and experience, so they're not frustrated. The contractor that we're going to get, they're going to facilitate all of our training, technical assistance, transportation and the ultimate disposition of the materials, whether that's disposal or recycling, et cetera. And then we will continue to have annual e-waste events because we're not going to be set up to, to collect e-waste yet at the facility. So what are the next steps to get this to come to fruition? Well, first, we have to complete construction. Like Paul was saying, we did run into some delays because of, you know, pandemic, it's a thing. But they said to me today, I talked to the superintendent and he said, couple of weeks maximum and it should be finished with the construction, so that's great news. We need to complete the permitting. It's ready to go to DEQ. It'll take about sixty days for them to approve it, for us to get that through. So about sixty days for the permitting. Hire staff. The announcement was released this week, so that's exciting. We hope to get that staffed pretty quickly. Choose the contractor. The deadline for proposals is October twenty-second. So after that, we'll choose a proposal and bring it to you for approval. Finish outfitting. We need to get a Geiger counter. We learned this later through the tours. It's very important, I guess, to exclude radioactive waste because the cost for disposing that is outrageous. And Oklahoma City especially said, and Midwest City, they were very strong about it in this area for some reason. Weird waste is contaminated with radioactivity. So we'll need to get a Geiger counter and then a few other supplies, you know, just to finish up outfitting it. And then finally, we need to open it. And we're planning for a soft opening for city employees. We're planning mid-December. I'd originally hoped beginning of December, but with permitting and everything and the pandemic delays, probably mid-December is what I'm, what I'm guessing. So some thoughts for the future. These are some ideas we have for what we're going to do in the future because like any good service that usually expands. And I know this, the residents of Norman really have a need for this. I know because I talk to somebody at least three times a day about what they should do with their materials, whatever it is. So, more staff. Why do I say that? Because we currently only will have one facility administrator for the facility. We're going to beg, borrow and steal staff from Brett's transfer station for help when we need it, but there'll be one. All of the other facilities have at least four or more full-time people running those facilities. And it's a lot of work. That's what they keep saying. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. You know, we'll manage it. More waste. Are there other wastes we want to take? You know, I said e-waste and doing the annual events. Maybe we should take that full-time year-round. Are there other things we could be doing? More service areas. Do we want to help out our neighboring communities? What about Cleveland County? What about Noble? What about Lexington? I'm just throwing out names. We could help them, too. And maybe we want to look at conditionally exempt generated waste. That's a small kind of household hazardous waste stuff that would come from commercial, our commercial friends or customers. Before I close with questions, I want to throw out another huge shout-out. And I think most of you will agree with me, but Debbie Smith, who was in this position before me, she bled and loved and cried and everything over this program and especially the household hazardous waste collection events and the dream of the facility. And so I just want to say, Debbie Smith, we love you and we're so glad that you're happy in your retirement. And with that, I'll take any questions. Yes, ma'am.
Speaking of the household hazardous waste event, we are still planning to have that this fall, correct?
Incorrect. We are not going to have a multi-pollutant event this year, but we are going to have an e-waste event, thank you for pointing that out, on October twenty-third from nine to noon, and a paint collection event. These are the two ways that we get the most calls about and that event will be November thirteenth.
Okay, and what is the plan for, because I'm sure we're all going to get questions. Where is the household hazardous waste event? We can tell them, you know, mid to late December. What are, what is your role out to educate residents on this new option?
So, our plan is to do a multi-pronged, just like we typically do, which would be talks at all of our events. So for instance, on October thirty-first, I'm going to throw this shout-out, too. The Lake Thunderbird Watershed Workshop and Cleanup Event is going to be held at the state park as usual. And I, that's one of the things I'm going to talk about it, that. We'll do the Facebook and events as well with the opening, et cetera. E-Cab is developing or will develop some educational literature. They were excited about that. I'll make flyers. We'll do press releases and that kind of.
The water bill?
Insert, that's part of the, yeah.
Gotcha. All right, Councilor Lynn?
Is a Geiger counter operation listed as a plus on the application? Yes. I know, but seriously, if it comes to that, what is the liability for employees? If they're, if they're coming in contact with stuff like that?
Well, we, we would refuse it. I mean, they would say, you can't take this. So it'll be a way for us to protect ourselves from getting some of that waste that's not something that we can take.
Mr. Lynn, what, what we, what we envision it looking like is kind of like what they do at the other facilities, which is the car comes in, the person, the staff member looks at the waste. They determine, they run the Geiger counter over. And, and if there is no radioactivity and it all looks like it's okay and the questions, because they interview the, the client who's coming in and ask them questions about where they came from, et cetera. If it looks copacetic, then they'll take it and they'll take it to the storage, uh, the management area. If it gets hot for a Geiger, for a radioactivity or it's some kind of methyl ethyl death that we do not take, um, they will reject it. And they'll offer their.
They report it?
Oh, yeah. So we have a waste exclusion plan that we were required to develop for permitting. And, and you know, it's good to have for your facility, anyway. And part of that is, yes, we, we make a note of it, we document it and we report it.
I'll throw something in there. For all municipal solid waste in the United States of America, they have a waste exclusion plan that excludes radioactive materials. So we're all trained. We have to be certified in Oklahoma, the management does, to do that. So it's no more greater, it's a no greater occurrence than what's naturally occurring now. We're just applying it to that facility, just like we do the transfer station.
But Brett, do we tell them where to take the radioactive material?
We call the DEQ.
Got it.
They have a plan.
We do direct them to resources, Mr. Pyle. That's absolutely, absolutely.
Sorry, can't take that.
That was something I never would have crossed my mind, so I'm glad.
And that's why, that's why I made a point about it.
Biggest culprit in, in my side and the municipal solid waste side is oil field drill pipe.
That die.
It's naturally occurring. They pick it up in the process and then they X-ray the pipes and they come in there and set the Geiger counter off.
Wow, all right. Learned something.
I know, it's interesting.
Councilor Hall?
So a couple of things, uh, when you talked about trying to have service every other Saturday, is that adding and you'll still be open five days a week?
No, so my plan was, I'm glad you asked that. Thank you so much. I'm going to use Sean's. I appreciate that question. So the first week, this is how I'm seeing it. The first week would be Monday through Friday. The second week would, they would have, instead of Saturday and Sunday off, it would be Sunday, Monday. And it would be Tuesday through Saturday. So that's what I'm seeing.
Okay. So, yeah, I was wondering because that seems like you'd even, one staff person won't go that far.
Right. No, and we're going to, it's right next to the transfer station and Brett has people. We're going to sub in and, and see what the need is going to be.
Exactly. Because really, you know, and I think, I think it was you, it might have been Nathan. I can't remember who said it, but you know, the, when we open this, this will be the first time that we've run the facility like this.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's very exciting because we're going to learn a lot of stuff and we're going to develop this together. I'm, yeah, obviously I'm excited.
Yeah, well, um, all I have to say is, yes, thank you Debbie Smith, but oh boy, did we hit the jackpot when we.
Want to go ahead?
Be the opportunity to move from stormwater.
Would you introduce her new employee in her new role and some of her resume highlights?
Does everyone know Michelle? Out back, yeah. Yeah, she was at the stormwater. And we were so excited to get her to come over to our team, yeah, when she applied. And totally, in the interviews, was totally outstanding. I mean, it was a clear winner. And so very happy to have her come over.
What's the official title?
She is the Environmental and Sustainability Manager.
So that's our sustainability coordinator. You finally got it, everyone.
And the resume highlights, DEQ, how long?
Almost twenty years.
Well-connected to DEQ, uh, just a big source of information. Already knows all the players.
Great rolodex. We really appreciate it.
So, when we talk about, when we talk about what cities do and the contribution that she's already made to stormwater, uh, to our city. I mean, we are so fortunate to have somebody that's been here as long as she has and now moved into this new role. So, super excited about it. Obviously, she loves what she does, so that's a plus. But anyway, I, um, I just really appreciate, um, that we've had the ability to do this and to make the decision to do this because Norman is a community that really pays attention to these things and wants clean air and clean water. And we're great recyclers and this is an extremely popular event that people always are asking about. So to have the ability now to move forward with a permanent facility, I can't wait to see what the numbers are in, um, the end of the year of twenty twenty-two because I'm imagining they'll just be off the charts for use. And I really appreciated, you know, thinking about the future, too, and how, you know, other municipalities might be able to contribute to make, make it available for their residents, too. The other thing I want to make sure and clarify is this is really for household residential waste. We're not at the place yet to manage commercial, right?
Correct. And that was why I was saying in the future, maybe that's something we can look at in the future.
Right. But I think the need is tremendous and I think this is a community that is really looking for safe ways to, um, manage their waste. And I love the idea of a swap shop. It's just another place where we can recycle, upcycle, reuse. I think that's going to be really popular, too. So anyways.
Councilor Hall, your comments remind me of a phrase I learned working with Gen Z. It's called glowed up. It means you're not only are you like getting bigger, but you're growing into yourself. And I think Norman is very much doing that in terms of our focus with both of these two facilities we covered today, public transportation and again, our, our goal is sustainability. So my students will be so proud that I use that phrase. Councilor Studley?
So you've kind of touched on the service area. So, right now, are you only foreseeing Norman residents allowed to use it?
Currently. Currently.
Would they be allowed to use it if they are like from Noble and pay a fee?
We are not to that point yet, Ms. Studley. But that said, you know, that is something, like I said, in the future, we're looking to when we expand service areas. Because that's what Oklahoma City does and that's what Midwest City does.
That's what other cities do.
They all do it with a fee and it depends on how they have the agreement with each city.
And this will be funded out of the fourteen-dollar residential fee. This is, this is a piece of that, so that's what's paying for this facility.
Do Norman residents then have to pay to come drop waste?
No, no. So they're already paying that on their bill. And so this, instead of taking it to the landfill, this is another place to take the residential waste.
I see what you're saying. Okay. And then, um, you mentioned, this is totally kind of off the subject. You mentioned the Lake Thunderbird Watershed Cleanup. What is the date on that?
That is October thirty-first from one PM to four PM. Yeah, it is. And I will be wearing a costume. I really expect this to be a great event. I can't stress it enough, I'm going to say it again, because there are many, uh, organizations and agencies that we're, that we work with, that we're around with, that, that are going to be there, that are going to participate. So I, it's going to be huge.
And then one final question. On the sharps kiosk, um, for me, this is personal because I do have to take shots and I don't know what to do with my little sharps container. So I can take my whole sharps container and drop it in that kiosk.
Exactly.
Beautiful, thank you.
Councilor Holman?
Sure the same sentiments as everyone else. I think you and I were both at the groundbreaking for this a little over a year ago down there in, uh, South Highway Nine with all of our other facilities in Ward Seven, which I'm real excited about. And, uh, and during my whole time on council over the years, questions about where to take paint and oil and things like that are, have been very common. And, uh, telling people, well, we have an event once a year you can go to, isn't always a great solution for them if it's in April and we don't have the event till October. And my predecessor, Doug Coverley, on the council, I believe he participated every year down at Lloyd Noble Center in the, in the conveyor line or whatever, helping get that done. So I know this was a big issue for him. And so I think, yeah, as a city, our size to have a facility. I mean, I'm really surprised that Midwest City was the other city and it wasn't Lauton or Edmond or Broken Arrow or any of the other bigger cities. So it's, it is a really big deal and I think it's going to serve us citizens all across the whole city. And I definitely support pursuing those future plans. Those are, taking electronics, I think, is a big deal, uh, more and more. So as e-waste is a, is a real issue. And then, yeah, opening it up to being able to service surrounding communities that are smaller and don't have this capability for fee, I think, is a good way to make, make some revenue off of this as well. So, uh, very excited to get this.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Exciting stuff. All right, I believe that is it for item number one, correct? Oh, nope, we got another one, even better.
Well, to have to follow Michelle, I've never seen anybody so excited about waste of any kind. So, um, I maybe should have been the first one because mine's not near as exciting. But just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on the Development Center. A little bit of background, obviously, that has been on the target board since two thousand and eight when the first election, uh, failed basically for the new library. We did get funding in that election to repurpose the building and move our, our city staff around. While that was approved by the voters in two thousand and eight, we certainly couldn't do that until we had the ability to build a new library and relocate them. So we did kick off that project in March of this year. Everything's been going great. The initial plan was to open, uh, in February of twenty-two. We stayed on, um, schedule even though we've, you know, all of the issues with getting product and, uh, I have to commend our, uh, construction manager, Crosslands. And for, they've just done a great job in maybe changing the order of some of the things or moving things around so that they could do, you know, get the product there and do things here while they're waiting on the other, or even getting a lot of the product in early and storing it just because the, you know, the unknown of what will happen going forward. The, when we first began, began the project, we did do testing for asbestos as you would in any building that old. The original building was built in nineteen sixty-seven, I believe. So, um, that is part of the process, that all of those tests came back negative. Um, and then as the demo began, um, we discovered a second ceiling in the building, which is not unusual because it was, the initial footprint built in sixty-seven was only twenty-one thousand square feet. The footprint over there now is fifty thousand square feet. So it was built on, added on to in the eighties, all the way around in different places. So there are, uh, the second ceiling was discovered and once we got to actually demoing that, we found some material in the, in that area up high that needed to be tested for asbestos. So that came to our attention, um, on the twenty-second of September. It's very recent, very recent. It did come back, um, positive for asbestos, so the project was put on hold, shut down and so that we could begin that containment and cleanup effort. The, uh, we did additional testing for air quality and then met with the Department of Labor, as you would anytime you discover something like this, to get the cleanup part underway. The contractor that is doing that was released for work yesterday. So they're beginning that process. The first portion of that will be, um, the wipe-down and cleaning of everything inside, the floors, the equipment, all of that kind of stuff. And then setting up their containment area for the area that has the asbestos for it actually to be abated. The, we expect to have that initial piece done, the cleanup, the wipe-down material set aside. The, we expect to have that initial piece done, the cleanup, the wipe down material set aside and all of that by the end of this month. This process, I have learned, is quite complicated, as you can imagine, because of the way you have to contain it and maintain it and throughout the process and all the different levels and the inspections from the Department of Labor as you go through the process. So as we continue on, we hope to, once we get through this initial wipe down, they'll begin their poly, another prep work for the removal phase, the end of October. That takes a few weeks. And then we hope to be underway with the actual removal and the scraping of the asbestos in December. That, as you can imagine, is a very tedious process because it, it may be a 21,000 square foot footprint. But you're, you're cleaning a lot more than that. Maybe closer to 30,000 to 35,000 because you're doing the ceiling and down the beam and under the beam and up the beam and, and all of that. So it's, it just takes a long time to abate something like that, especially at that large of an area. And that is where the sad news comes in because the project obviously is shut down until they can get that cleaned out. It's, it's about a six-month process, four to six-month process. So as we determine, you know, initially we were planning to move in, in March. February or March of next year. We're now looking at probably closer to September, once we are able to complete this process and then get the contractor back in there. Fortunately, it also comes at a very expensive cost. That's unfortunate, not fortunate. So just so that kind of keep this in the back of your mind when we're looking at older buildings and stuff. The, the price tag on this is going to be somewhere close to a million dollars to get this abated. And we are currently probably looking at moving some other capital projects around in order to get the funding in to complete the process. That is currently underway by staff. The, one thing that I really can't get into too much on since we didn't actually list this as the whole municipal complex project. But one of the good things about it is that we were pretty much ready to kick off on the renovation of this building. So they, our contractor won't, you know, have to demobilize and remobilize and all of that. So they'll be, about all I can say about that since it's not listed is you will see the renovations and the council chambers begin. We're doing other things right now, but that part will begin in mid-December during, through the holidays when we don't have meetings in there and they can get in there and do a lot of that stuff. So, this project is expected to take about six months or so. So hopefully, it should just dovetail right back in where they can get right back to work over in the development center. We're super excited about the project. It's really coming together. I mean, everything's moving really fast and then all of a sudden. But there's still a lot to do in the meantime. You know, we're working on our furniture plans and everything else and there's still a lot to do. And it's going to be a beautiful facility. Can't wait for you all to see it. And once we get back rolling again, we'll have a tour or something so everybody can come in and see. But honestly, they're, all the steel's in, the sheet rocks up. I mean, there's tons of offices already and then we hit this second, this second ceiling. So, happy to answer any questions.
Councilor Holman.
So just the original part of the building is the issue?
Yeah, the 21,000 square feet.
Which means we probably won't have to expect that in our other buildings that were built in the eighties.
Probably not. However, we will be testing all of them. Because what I did learn is when this came into play in '75 or '76, whatever, somewhere in the late seventies, they were, vendors were allowed to continue to sell these materials until they ran out. So, I mean, not really sure.
It's bad, but you can keep selling it.
Not sure why that was allowed. So, you know, things that were built in the late seventies and even early eighties, depending on where they got their materials, could contain it. So we'll be testing all of the facilities before we disrupt anything.
And are there, is there any state or federal or any kind of funding for this type of environmental abatement?
Not, that's a very good question. We did look at that, not so much for this type of environmental abatement. You know, there are things for brownfields and other things, but not for asbestos. But we are still looking, making sure we unturn, turn over every rock to see what might be available to us to, to help with the abatement because it is a huge process.
Yeah, I mean, a million dollars, just to come up with that out of nowhere. That's, and even moving projects around, I mean, those are all projects that need that funding too.
They do. I mean, and that's, you know, as Michelle and predecessors have both spoke to, funding's always an issue. I think Sean said that in every project we do in Norman. We are always looking for money to make sure we can get it done right. And certainly this project has been a vision for quite some time. And I think the community is really excited to see this whole development center come to place where all the things related to development will be under one roof. And so it's pretty exciting. We can't, you know, we're kind of halfway done, so we can't stop. So we're going to have to come up with Plan B. And that may very well be pushing out a project another year or two or something, just to, not sure yet exactly what will happen with that. But we will be coming back to council more than likely to, to move a project around, so get the funding.
Well, if anyone can find the grants, I'm confident our staff can find the grants. Any other questions? Councilor Hall.
I don't have a question. I just would like to ask to have the slides of the previous two sent to our audience. Thank you.
All right. Now, that's the update with some of our exciting projects that are improving services for Norman residents. And we will turn to a presentation, which I want to clarify is just the beginning of findings and recommendations. We won't get the full findings and recommendations until I believe December. So.
That's correct. Probably within four, five weeks or so. And then I kind of get it on your meeting calendar. So I think there's openings right now, maybe for the end of November or the first of December. The goal is definitely to have it before you, before the holiday break. That's what I'm calling it.
So just keep that in mind as we discuss this, this is not the full thing. So I just wanted to make sure everyone was clear on that.
Julie, can you hear me? Ah, perfect. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council and leadership. So I know you're all extremely excited about this. I am. Lisa Craig is. We've been working on this for quite some time. This is the Homebase team. Julie Silas, Carolyn Wiley and David Dirks. They are going to be presenting the work product on what, what the past feels like forever, but the past couple of months that we've been working on. They've done an enormous amount of work, detail, and we are extremely happy so far. And I know you're going to have a lot of questions. This will not be the last opportunity to ask. We will be presenting this in, in its entirety. Brenda, I think we said about a month from now for a full session. So you will have your opportunity to ask in-depth questions because you will have a lot, I'm sure. But this is just going to provide a wonderful oversight to the work so far. So, team, go ahead, take it away.
Okay, are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, great. Okay. So, Mayor and council members, thank you so much for having us this evening. I'm Carolyn Wiley. I'm the VP Director with Homebase. I have with me Julie Silas, the Director of Attorney, and David Dirks, Senior Staff Attorney. And we've been the team leading the work with Homebase and working with the community. So again, thank you for having us. It's been a pleasure and we're happy to be here this evening. So a little bit about Homebase. I know that you probably know some about us and choosing us, so we appreciate that. Perhaps it'll be brief, but we're a nonprofit who has been working with homelessness for over 30 years. We work all across the country with communities, working to prevent and end homelessness. And one of our big focuses is on successful plan implementation. So we'll talk a little bit about that throughout today. But one of the real emphases for us on this plan was to identify areas for intervention and then to work with you on recommendations that we can now move into implementing action steps to move you forward towards that. And another area was really to ensure that we had a lot of community engagement and really honor your local expertise and especially to engage people with experience. So that was something that we really worked on as well. So, I'm gonna... So we're going to split up the presentation, so you're going to hear a lot from each of us. So I'm going to hand it now over to Julie, who's going to take you through some of the context and... Oh, I'm sorry, apologies. I'm going to hand it over to David, who's going to talk a little bit about our methodology. And then Julie will take you through some of the data. So David, I'll hand over to you.
Thank you, Carolyn. And once again, it's an honor to be there with, well, to be there in spirit with you all. I have the pleasure of going through, providing an overview of the strategic planning process. Next slide, please. So, the strategic planning process is divided into two parts. The first part, we focused on identifying, identifying, understanding and building consensus around the needs in the community. To do that, we conducted an environmental scan. We gathered data. We conducted community engagement activities, which included over 20 interviews, more than 500 surveys and five focus groups. Took all of those components and we conducted an analysis of all of that information and all of that data, which you will then be able to see in the upcoming report with recommendations. Next slide, please. The second part of the analysis consists of developing the strategies and recommendations, which includes sharing the GAPS analysis, working with the community to prioritize recommendations, developing the action plan and ultimately implementing the recommendations, which includes building a support for the action plan, help with marketing materials and providing other strategic guidance for action step implementation as needed. Next slide, please. Overall, the reason why we conduct the GAPS analysis and an action plan is that we know that financial resources are important. However, there are a lot of other resources such as the voices of stakeholders, including those with lived experience, available services in the community, the land that's available for use and other important resources. The GAPS analysis helps us establish a shared understanding of the gaps and needs in the community, align stakeholders and resources in support of shared objectives and helps us establish greater community-wide collaboration. So, to summarize this portion of the presentation, because we definitely have much more to discuss, the GAPS analysis provides an overview of homelessness in the city of Norman in Cleveland County. The city of Norman, it includes the gaps and needs assessment. And lastly, it includes recommendations for each of the gaps and needs areas that we've identified. And now I think I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Julie Silas.
Thanks, David. So before we get into the gaps and needs and the recommendations, we wanted to sort of set a level playing field amongst us all about some of the key facts and information that helped us really do an analysis and kind of set up the questions that we ask within the community. There is a lot of data in the report and so I'm only pulling out some of the data. So when you get the report, you'll see that there's a lot more depth. But let's just kind of go through, kind of set the tone about affordable housing. So, it's not a surprise, Carly, most of you, that there is a shortage of affordable rental units in the city of Norman in Cleveland County. Just wanted to pull out some of the facts about that. So, seven out of 10 housing units that are available are three bedrooms or more. And only 10% or less than 10% are actually one bedroom. And I think that sort of is specific to the city of Norman with the university base there and the high desire for housing for students, college students, who of course live in more communal housing, with more bedrooms, so more people can live in them. And so I think we don't see this as much in other communities as we saw for your community. So just wanted to make sure we pointed that out. And then about only a third of the housing units are renter occupied units. So that's just a little bit of context around affordable housing in general. And then another really important thing is they are not really affordable, most of the units. So affordable in the context of the Housing and Urban Development HUD is no more than 30% of income is spent on housing. And so that's the context for which we say some things affordable. Almost one in three households in the city of Norman in Cleveland County pay more than 30% and that's what's known as being cost burdened. And important to note is more than one in two black graphic American households actually pay more than 30% of their income on housing. So again, just setting the tone and, you know, these are some of the key context for what is available in terms of housing. Next slide. So in, in addition, we want to kind of talk a little bit about who's homeless in your community. And this is just a little snapshot. You have the majority of folks who are homeless in Cleveland County and the city of Norman are adults. Small percentage are children, but a significant percentage, but still small. And then when you look at folks, whether they're sheltered or unsheltered, and what we mean by that is that those who are homeless may be in an emergency shelter. And if they're unsheltered, that means they're living in a place not meant for human habitation. So in a car, on the street, in a cabin, on the sidewalk, in parks, et cetera. So this gives you some sense. And it's a pretty even base. There's still more unsheltered folks and sheltered folks. And you'll find in some communities, there's more sheltered folks than unsheltered folks vice versa. But yours is fairly even, though still more people are living unsheltered. Next slide. This is also about the Point in Time Count. And that is a ritual that happens every year, one in one day. It's called Point in Time. And volunteers and community members and service providers go out in the community and identify how many people are experiencing homelessness on that one day. It doesn't measure how many people have experienced homelessness throughout a year, but it is a snapshot that HUD uses to identify the number of people experiencing homelessness. So if you look at this, you'll see that over a period of time from 2015 to 2019, you had slight growth in homelessness over time. And you also had, what's important, in 20, between 2017 and 2018, it looks like a big jump. And some of that was an increase in the number of people homeless, but it also was a more robust way of counting people who are homeless. So that larger jump isn't all attributable from a larger number of people. There was also the way that the Point in Time Count occurred that year. But you'll see that it hasn't really changed. And you'll see, one thing that is noticeable is around 2017, you see that the change in the majority of folks. So it used to be that most people were sheltered and less people were unsheltered. And then around 2017, you'll see that change so that now more people are unsheltered than are sheltered. And that's a pattern that you see all over the country. It's not just in your community, but important to know. Next slide. Another area that we looked at is how homelessness divides by race. And as you all are probably familiar, a majority of the folks who live in Cleveland County and save Norman are white. And so that's reflected in the statistics here. But what's not as obvious by this chart, but something we really want to point out, is that Asians and white folks are underrepresented in the homeless community as compared to the general population. But the opposite is true for Native American, Alaska Native and Black or African American folks. So you'll see that you have twice as many people who are Black or African American in your homeless system of care than you do in your general, general population. And that's pretty significant. That's 100% more than in the general population. So it's just something that we felt important to point out. Next slide. So looking at the, some of the things that contribute to homelessness, we wanted to identify a couple of those things. So disability status contributes to homelessness. And you'll see in this green chart that we look at disability status across a lot of different disabilities, developmental disabilities, substance use disorder, physical disability, mental health disability. And you'll see that there are a number, pretty high percentage of folks, one in three who have a mental health condition. And you have more than one in 10 folks who are in the homeless system of care who have a physical disability. And that impacts how the system responds to homelessness. Another contributing factor to homelessness is the lack of, the lack of sufficient income. Let me say the lack of sufficient income. Just caught it, of course, when I'm presenting. So six in 10 folks... So six in ten folks in the homeless system of care have no source of income whatsoever. And one in two don't have any source of non-cash benefits. So they might have low income sources, but they don't have those cash benefits that enable people to live on low income. So that's food stamps, which is known as SNAP, temporary assistance for needy families. So those are really important aspects of the lack of financial resources that people have. Another thing is half of the folks don't have health insurance. One in two people don't have any health insurance, and that includes Medicaid. Twenty-five percent or one in four people have had some experience with domestic violence. And about twenty percent or one in five are chronically homeless. And what that is defined as is having a disability as well as being homeless for either more than a full year or at least four times within a three-year period. And so you have a number of people in your homeless system of care that have, that are chronically homeless. Next slide. The last thing we want to talk about in terms of data is that your housing needs are greater than your total beds available for folks. So the pie chart on the left is from January 2020, when the number of beds, it's called a housing inventory, were counted. And you'll see that there were about two hundred fifty-nine beds available. And at the same time, when the PIG count was done, there were one hundred forty-six people unsheltered. So just thinking of that, and that's, you know, a third of the people, of the beds would be, we would need at least thirty percent, forty percent more beds to be able to fill those beds for one hundred forty-six people. And you'll see in the most recent data from June 2021, that you have waiting lists for permanent housing. There is about seventy-six people who are in line for permanent supportive housing and about thirty-one people in line for a rapid rehousing. So that's, again, a very small piece of the data that we wanted to provide you all, but we wanted to make sure that we put some of that out there as we went through and helped you. I shared with you next are the gaps and the recommendations. So I think I am turning it back to Carolyn.
Okay, thank you very much, Julie. All right. So I'm gonna start out and talk to us a little bit about some of the key strengths that really stood out to us about the homeless system of care as we went through our analysis. So there was a very engaged and collaborative continuum of care, with generally good internal communication among the providers and between the C O C leadership and the continuum of care. We saw a really strong partnership with the city of Norman Housing Authority that was very actively engaged and a really good partner, and also wanting to just even expand in the offerings. Crisis Intervention Program to the Norman Police Department. A low-barrier emergency winter shelter and warming center that was providing low-barrier supportive services that had expanded really through the COVID-19 crisis, and was wanting to continue to consider expanding. Support for subpopulations in the region, that includes youth, families with children, families and individuals fleeing domestic violence, and veterans. And a very active continuum of care, coordinated entry, H M I S lead in the city of Norman. So again, those are just sampling of the real strengths of the homeless system of care that we identified as we moved through our analysis and wanted to make sure that I highlight in the report and here today. So next, we'll go ahead and talk about the areas for intervention. So we identified seven key priority areas for intervention. And I'll go over those now, and then we'll go over them in detail along with recommendations. So when I say areas for intervention, the reason that we wanted to identify these areas is because, again, as I talked about in the beginning, we really want to focus in on areas where if we implement and take action on these, it can really make a difference in addressing homelessness in your area. So the first one is opportunities for safe and affordable housing. The second, low-barrier housing and day services. The third is supportive services. The fourth is transportation to employment services and shelter. The fifth is coordinated prevention assistance. The sixth is utilization of H M I S and data analysis. And the seventh is coordination and communication to ensure effective use of limited resources. So I'll go into each of those, and then we'll also talk about some recommendations around each. In the report, what we did is we identify and talk enough about each of these areas. And then we provide a menu of recommendations grouped around the seven areas. And we include some of those recommendations in the PowerPoint here today. We won't touch on all of them today, but we included kind of a sampling to show you in the PowerPoint. But the idea of kind of including a menu of recommendations, both in the PowerPoint and in the report, is that allows us to really work with the community to build consensus, to help prioritize, and also then create the action plan. So we can, you know, show a variety of best practice solutions and then help to work with you to identify which ones are priority for you, which ones the community can kind of, can build a consensus around with you. And then we can help to build that action plan and really prioritize. Because some are gonna be short-term solutions, some are gonna be more long-term solutions. And again, you have to identify resources to go with them. So that's why you'll see kind of a variety of solutions that go with them. So let's start with the opportunities for safe and affordable housing. So some of the points behind that are something that you're all familiar with, which is the need for affordable units. Julie already kind of highlighted some of the data behind that. Another key area in that is increasing the number of landlords who are willing to rent people with lived experience. As you know, that's, that's an area that is difficult and really needs some work around it. And so both in our quantitative and qualitative outreach and work on that, that's something that came up a lot. So we'll provide you with some recommendations around that. Another thing that came up quite a bit was affordable housing for people with a criminal background. So again, we'll provide some recommendations around that. And then removing other barriers to housing that exist for people who are experiencing homelessness or who are at risk. So some recommendations for the need for affordable housing. Again, that falls into really three key areas of sort of policy and planning, creative or new development, and then incentivizing development. I'll highlight a couple for you. One that is, I think, one of the most consistent things that came up was prioritizing the development of single-room occupancy building, or SROs. So I think that's a key recommendation. Also, requiring subsidized or new developments dedicating a proportion of new units for extremely low-income households. So that's another policy recommendation. So that's an example of a policy recommendation. So those are the types of recommendations that you'll see in the report. Again, categorized by different, different types and in each area for each one of the recommendations. So we'll move into the next area. So landlord engagement. Again, this is one that was brought up by pretty much every type of stakeholder that we talked to, both the providers and individuals with lived experience, that city staff. So developing a landlord engagement campaign, multifaceted, incentivizing landlords with a mitigation fund or incentive support funds, and then finding ways to build positive relationships with landlords. So those are some key recommendations in this area. And then on the tenant side, addressing barriers for tenants. So there can be ideas there, like creating portfolios for clients, including letters of support, things like that. So key recommendations like that that you'll find much more detail on in the report. And then for housing assistance, and you guys have already moved forward on one of these, like designating a county-wide housing navigator, creating an advertising campaign that will highlight the various forms of brown assistance, because we heard from individuals with lived experience that they're not often aware of various programs. One thing that we heard a lot about was a great program that you have for, it's a one-stop program to provide identification documents. We heard a lot about the barriers to getting those identification documents when you're having to do it sort of piece by piece, or in a variety of programs. So expanding that program is one suggestion. And then creating a flexible funding pool that can really supplement your traditional funding streams. So those are some of the suggestions in terms of housing assistance. So low-barrier housing and day services. As you likely know, there's limited capacity in emergency shelters, and there's no permanent full-service twenty-four-hour facility. There's only three year-round shelters that have capacity to serve more than five individual households at a time. So there's a real need for more low-barrier housing-focused shelter and services. Housing-focused meaning that they are low-barrier and that they tailor the services of support to the household with the goal of helping homelessness, rather than just being like a crisis support or mentally placed for people to stay. And then low-barrier, meaning they have few preconditions for admitting. So, you know, not blocking people out based on sobriety, ID, income, those kinds of things, or requiring certain preconditions in terms of, you know, pets can't come in, or partners, things like that. Also service participation requirements, and that, you know, require people to participate in certain, you know, case management or other, you know, other. Sometimes it can be chapel, or just other things that they have to do to stay in the program. So that's the kind of low-barrier housing-focused shelter and services that we would recommend. So, and really improving focus on that housing-first implementation in all programs, not just shelter, but in all housing programs in the community. There's also a reported trend of criminalizing homelessness in the region, where making it unlawful to sleep in public, or being stopped regularly while walking or congregating. Some people who may have a trauma reaction to law enforcement be coming into their programs or things like that. So that's something that we also talk about in the report. So those are some recommendations around that. So one key, very top recommendation would be to establish a permanent year-round low-barrier housing-focused shelter with day and night access. And that's something that, you know, both quantitatively and qualitatively, we heard a lot of feedback from. Reducing the existing barriers to entry, and then promoting use of best practices, such as motivational interviewing, trauma-informed care, and harm reduction. Okay, so we're gonna hand it over now to Julie.
Thanks, Carolyn. So the next area of gaps that we found was around supportive services. And the key gaps were around mental health services, substance use treatment, and intensive case management. Case management, in the context of homeless system of care, is really focused attention from staff on helping people sort of manage life skills, making sure they get the services they need, helping, you know, coordinating with the housing navigator, helping them get their identification. And then as the next bullet says, for individuals with higher acuity conditions, maybe have less education or more intense service needs, intense case management is really required there, where you're really doing a little bit more of helping navigating, and you're especially dealing with people who have a difficult time navigating the system. So they need more help from service providers. So those are sort of the key gaps. And then another is more enhanced street and encampment outreach. And then so those were the areas for supportive services that, you know, there were a lot of supportive services. You have a robust support services, but these were the areas where consistently there was feedback that there would be some change that would occur if you've had more mental health services, more substance use treatment, and more intensive case management. So we'll go ahead and tell you what some of those recommendations are. So we suggested increasing the availability of drug treatment and mental health services in the community, expanding intensive case management support for those high-needs individuals, which we just addressed in the earlier slide. Ensuring that the provider staff are trained on how to use focused approaches and that the housing navigation is available countywide. What we mean by that, as Carolyn referred to, housing focus, so helping get documentation, because you need documentation to show your ID in order to be able to rent to a landlord. Or housing focus might be providing the kinds of services that would allow people to build the skills, the budget, so that they can continue to pay their rent on time. So the focus is a number of services, and they're individually tailored to the people that you're helping that will help them achieve and be successfully and stably housed over the long term. And then the last thing on this list is strengthening coordination with mainstream resources. And what we mean by that is outside the homeless system of care, when we're talking about getting people on health insurance, when we're talking about getting them on some of the public benefits. We talked earlier in the data that not a lot of people have access to public benefits or are enrolled or have health insurance. So strengthening and collaborating more with those other systems to be able to help some of the same people who are touching all the systems at the same time. Next slide. For outreach, we talked about just expanding county-wide, street and encampment outreach, creating interdisciplinary teams of those outreach teams. So having mobile outreach vans that maybe have medical providers on them, or housing navigators that are going together with case managers into the field. And then developing a peer support program with an outreach component. And this, I want to stop for a second, because one of the things we hear from the public at large is that a lot of people are experiencing homelessness, don't want to be housed. And what we really know is that with building trust, and especially through peer support, people really do want to be housed, but sometimes it takes that extra, those extra resources to build that trust, to make them feel comfortable and know that that effort that's being made will have a long-lasting impact. And so peer support can really go far to do that. So those are some of the things we talked about when we talked about supportive services. Next slide. So transportation to employment services and shelter was another one of our gaps and needs areas. And sometimes you think of transportation as just a very small piece of the puzzle, but we heard this, transportation, particularly in the broader Cleveland County area, is something that hundred, almost a hundred percent of the people that we interviewed or did focus groups or surveys, who had experienced homelessness, felt this was a top need. And when you think about transportation, it really creates barriers to accessing services, being able to go to job interviews, to be able to get a job and be able to go to the job in a timely fashion on a daily basis. And also prevents sometimes if they don't have sufficient transportation, it prevents people finding housing, as well as using childcare and being able to keep appointments or to get to healthcare appointments, et cetera. And we noticed also that services and housing options in the region are really concentrated in some parts of the county that have limited transportations available countywide. So for people who are living in more rural areas, and they're needing to go in for mental health services, sometimes the transportation isn't available to do that. And we, we had one person who said that they could take the transportation so far and still had to walk a mile and a half at the end of the route in order to get to their own house. So that's a big challenge for folks. So we'll go ahead to the next slide and talk about some of the recommendations. So one was to develop a more comprehensive transportation strategy that really has a focus on serving people who are experiencing homelessness and coordinate that with the transit authority. Perhaps doing some kind of subsidized ride-sharing, maybe even in coordination with healthcare to help people not only get to their appointments with healthcare, but also just to be able to access all the other services. And you'll see, we also looked at discounted fares or free transportation to enable that. And then provided, one thing we heard from people experiencing homelessness was that sometimes it was really hard, if you didn't have a smartphone, to be able to know what the schedule was. So as the transportation system has moved into the 21st century, we assume that everyone has access to information on smartphones, but sometimes people experiencing homelessness have more limited access, either don't have phones or have limited plans that don't allow them to access as well. And so that was one of their big challenges. So that gives you a sense of some of the ideas that we had around transportation. And I will pass it to David.
Thanks, Julie. The next sort of key area to intervene in is in the area of coordinated prevention assistance. And what we mean here is that, you know, we want to prevent folks as much as possible from even entering and touching the homeless system. You know, the experience is traumatic for most people. Data tells us that if they enter the system, they may enter the system again. They may stay for long periods of time. So whatever we can do on the front end to keep people from having to enter the system is a plus for everyone in the community. And, and to this point, we know that many people face the choice of paying for their housing or meeting other basic needs, such as food and healthcare. So they're economically strapped, it's an economic issue. Each year, we see individuals and families become homeless for the first time, meaning we see new people entering our system each year. And that's something that we should prevent, and there in the. And that's something that we should prevent in, in there in Norman and across the country. And the next point is prevention programs, although very under-resourced, they do do a good job of, some programs do a good job of effectively preventing homelessness. So, some recommendations that we listed in the report focuses on sort of three areas. Enhancing the system, building collaborative partnerships, and of course, increasing stability for households so that they can stay in their house, right? So, under the enhan, under enhancing the system, we, we think that's important to emphasize protocols for identifying and prioritizing something serving at-risk households. What we do know is from data that some people may, you know, be facing an economic insecurity issue, may not enter the homeless system at all. So, we definitely still want to prioritize those folks who are going to be at risk of entering the homeless system. We also want to provide regular training to all stakeholder partners and problem-solving conversation techniques. You know, that needs to be trauma-informed, uh, trauma-informed. It needs to be culturally relevant. Also with collaborative partnerships, reaching out to the faith community, the philanthropic community and other service organizations that are outside the homeless system of care to help with supporting those critical initiatives and interventions. Then we also want to strengthen partnerships to avoid discharges into homelessness from all of the other feeder systems. So, from the healthcare systems, perhaps from the justice system. But these are some partnerships and some recommendations to look up in terms of creating those partnerships. Keeping people in our homes, you know, increasing the stability, expanding access to income, including employment and benefits. I think this is a win-win for all. So, if we can figure out ways to expand that access, that would be amazing. And then the last thing here is increasing the support for formerly homeless households with intensive service needs to attain long-term housing stability. So, those people who may be experiencing homelessness time and time again, or they may, you know, they may have mental or other type of physical disabilities that are going to keep them from staying in their housing, we should increase those services. Next slide, please. So, the next key area for intervention, I would say improvement, is in the area of robust data collection and analysis. We know that in order to be responsive to, to the community, in order for the city to really focus its scarce resources on the most highest need and vulnerable individuals, we need access to reliable and valid data. So, gathering accurate, timely data within the homeless system of care is challenging that topic. So, in order, and what we've identified from stakeholders within, from all key stakeholders, but especially those who are in the data sort of lane. We also know that the HMIS system administrator has HMIS policies and procedures in place in conjunction with the CLC processes and structures. So, that's actually a good thing. Many agencies reported that they do not have adequate resources to participate in HMIS or meet the standards. And what we mean by the resources, that could be funding to actually pay for HMIS, staffing to actually put the, the, the data into HMIS to run the data. So, we really should focus on creating more and having more resources to make sure we're adequately, adequately meeting the standards for HMIS and data collection. And then it also appears there is not a shared commitment toward data quality amongst CLC members. So, working with the CLC members to tell them how important it is to create shared common goals and to ensure that people have training in order to, you know, bring those, bring that commitment toward data quality to everyone to a level playing field. And the last point here on this slide is that there, it appears there is not a common understanding about fundamental aspects of HMIS and HUD reporting requirements. So, that's about education and training as well. So, these are some key areas for intervention, but we do have some recommendations to sort of smooth this data collection process over in the community. And four key areas for data collection and analysis includes, you know, using the data quality plan. You all already have a data quality plan. So, using that data quality plan to create new engagement and accountability, conducting a more robust data gathering, figuring out ways how we can gather the data, where can we gather the data? Are there more access points to receive data? Evaluate, evaluating and addressing disparities within the system, how many people, who, who are the people we're staying on with? Who, who are receiving different type of interventions versus other type, other folks in the community? And then implementing appropriate incentives and establishing a monitoring structure. And that's for any of the CLC members or those that are involved in data collection. You know, we want to ensure that we, you know, award good, 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 good stewardship of collecting data, but also establishing the monitoring structure to make sure that we're actually receiving the data that we need. And then Carolyn, I believe, was going to go to our next key intervention area.
All right. So, our final area is about kind of a coordination and communication and within the CLC and externally. So, one of the things that we found and we talk about throughout the report is how much sort of passion and commitment there was around homelessness within the community. And one of the things that that brings though is that there's a wide variation really in the feelings about existing structures and efforts to address homelessness. So, we tried within the report to just be really transparent about when there were differences about that and to bring those, that variety of feelings in to the report. So, because there's really no full consensus really around some of the, you know, amongst CLC stakeholders about how to work best with the broader community, and there was this wide variation in feelings about the structure, we have some recommendations in there about, you know, sort of for the future, some better ways to maybe work with the, with the community. We also felt like there was a need to better, do some better outreach to individuals and families experiencing homelessness, given the feedback that we received in the surveys and some of the outreach. And then, you know, improving maybe education and engagement efforts with the public based on the surveys. We received a significant number of surveys from the community, which was fantastic, given just it shows the passion that people have and it also allows us to really hear from them. But it also just shows that there are some either kind of misunderstandings or just need to provide additional information. I mean, I think the survey showed that there, some additional feedback is required. So, some of the recommendations from that, develop and distribute some more accessible resource materials for individuals experiencing homelessness. Some of the feedback we got was, you know, that people don't know what is available and that, you know, they often, because of the lack of transportation, have to walk from agency to agency sort of trying to find out what's available. And that that can be really difficult. And, you know, there were people who weren't aware of the fantastic program that you were providing as the warming center or, you know, basically the, the emergency shelter that the city was providing. You know, and in one of our focus groups that we were doing, we provided them information about it. They had walked from several providers and hadn't found out about it. So, I mean, just finding, you know, an ability to distribute some more current and accessible resource materials is something that almost universally was something that was brought up by people in experiencing homelessness. So, I think that's really important. Potentially creating a publicly facing dashboard that shows progress towards identified goals, I think is one way to potentially do the out, some of that outreach to the public. And probably doing that in a way that, you know, maybe doesn't use some of the vernacular and things that CLC providers and us and people with expertise often use, but in a way that's really readily accessible. Creating some formal mechanisms to really support transparency around the CLC to the broader community. You know, basically making sure that there's a really fully fleshed-out website, that there's using some social media, there's a clear calendar of events, things like that. We talked more about that in the report, but, you know, just finding ways to just really readily engage and explain and communicate. Really promoting dialogue with external entities. Again, I think what we found was there were a really broad cross-section of people with an interest in this issue who aren't always engaging with each other. So, finding some ways and we're hoping that this report and then the release of the report and then the discussion about priorities and then the development of the action plan and then moving the action plan forward can hopefully be really the vehicle for that. But hopefully after that, you know, then there'll be some mechanism set up to continue to promote that dialogue. One thing in terms of involving people with lived experience of homelessness, both currently experiencing and with recent lived experience, would be potentially to set up a lived experience advisory board. That's something that's recommended by HUD for recipients of different HUD funding streams. So, that would be a recommendation around that. And then creating a communications campaign that potentially improve public understanding of homelessness. And that might be another way to, again, promote dialogue with various entities. So, and those are some recommendations around that. And that is our presentation of the report. And we are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. I think my first question is for C Manager Pyle. Where are we at on 718 Porter?
Been in contact with Mr. Split about accelerating the occupancy of 718 separate and apart from the replating of the current Porter campus footprint. We'd kind of envisioned all these pieces of property changing title kind of all at the same time. And that's taking longer than we're comfortable with as it relates to our opportunities at 718 North Porter. So, I made contact with Mr. Split last week and I said, okay, maybe we decouple those two activities and let us accelerate, even if we can't change title on 718. Can you lease it to me for a dollar a month and we're going to occupy the space anyway? So, he's working on that part of the puzzle as we speak.
Why is that, why is it taking, what is the challenge there? Why is it taking so long?
I don't know if, one of our attorneys this evening, the replating process, there's been an awful lot of work going between attorneys in preparation of the replating. And actually what we're doing is staffs meeting with staff and we're letting the attorneys go do their thing, but staff wants to get it done a little quicker. So, we're going to try to accelerate the process and have the legal part happen at the end because we think we can go faster than we're going right now.
And so, potentially that could be a 24-hour shelter with services right there, a better communication hub and whatnot. So, that would be a key part of, I think, kicking off the recommendations of this plan.
Kind of our thoughts from day one, when that puzzle piece showed up on the table face-up that, you know, location, location, location. And with what we're seeing in terms of investments in other support services and healthcare services directly across the street on the Porter campus, its location in proximity to the Salvation Army with its expansion plans and ability to provide meals and shelter services on mass transit, major corridors, it seems to be, seems to have some advantages we may be able to fine-tune.
Okay. Councilwoman Berlin?
I have a question for them. When they, they had some numbers about mental health and substance abuses. And when, when you got these numbers, there was 12% for substance abuse, are these self-reported numbers that you garnered?
Yeah, that's correct. Those are from the self-reported from the point-of-time count.
Okay. Would you, I just, I just have a hard time believing that to be factually true and that somebody might be even honest about that in, in their position.
Yeah, I think that, that it's likely under, the substance abuse one is likely under-reported because sometimes that's a barrier to admittance to some of the programs. So, people do often under-report substance use, which is one of the reasons why we recommend more aware programs. But yeah, I agree that it's often under-reported when it's self-reported at times.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Berman?
So, this was the presentation today, but in a few months, there's a
Few weeks.
Few weeks more robust, more detailed that we will get a presentation on and talk about. Is that?
Correct. You'll receive the full report.
Definitely a lot to chew on, but I don't know if any of it was very surprising. We know we need more affordable housing. Fortunately, again, we've already spoken about addressing that with ARPA funds and seeing, again, as much as we can possibly accomplish with that. We are meeting with county in a couple of weeks. Maybe we could work on that because obviously Norman's taken on the whole county addressing this issue. So, it would be nice to see some collaboration there as well. And I know that the county is as passionate about caring for their residents as we are. So, looking forward to that conversation. Councilwoman Hall?
First of all, I'd also like to request that we get these slides.
They're on your iPad.
Oh, they are?
Yeah, I got them late this afternoon.
Okay.
So, I moved them over on your iPads.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
And I'll send you the ones from earlier presentations in the morning. I didn't actually have those yet.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Berman?
On the point about the county, it looked like on there that it was about, there were about 100 identified folks that did not live in Norman that were homeless. So, in the county, I guess, most of them being in Norman, but it looked like from those numbers, there were about 100 that identified as not, as being homeless and not being in Norman or just being in the county, I guess. But I'd be interested to see where those folks are at, if they're just Southside OKC folks or if there are any in Lexington and Noble and rural, wherever.
Well, I haven't done my research on our smaller neighboring communities, but as the county seat, I assume by default, we have more services. So, if you're
I don't know if any of them have any.
Better place to be in Cleveland County, should you need assistance.
Yeah.
Sorry, Councilwoman Hall?
Oh, that's all right. Yeah, I was, one of the things that really struck me is especially taking a deep dive in this issue like I have over the last couple of years is how much we have concentrated on what we're trying to do in Norman, but that the CLC is a county-wide plan. And I'm looking forward to, you know, having some additional conversations on the county side, actually on a variety of things. But when you look at transportation and just, you know, where people might find themselves, access for service, that kind of thing, I think we've been so focused on what we can address right here in our own city that we probably need to, you know, take into consideration that this is really serving the entire county and how we can engage other partners throughout the county to, to address some of these things.
The forest through the trees.
Yeah. So, you know, this is really content-rich. I think it's a lot of things that we all recognize already that we have, you know, significant areas that we need to build on. But I was also struck with the strengths that we do have and how we move forward and how we move forward with a strategic plan in all of these categories. And to me, the most emergent piece, well, two really, and you touched on them. We have to address affordable housing, not only for those unsheltered, but for those who are on the verge of being unsheltered. We know that this is a significant issue that we keep nibbling around the edges, but it needs to be put front and center. And I think we're making some movement to do that, that thing, to get it in front and center. The fact that we now have a housing coordinator, a housing navigator on our city staff, I think will address another really pressing issue that ties into the availability of affordable housing, and that's building relationships with landlords that have the housing that we need to use in addition to what we may need to build. I'm really excited about exploring single-room occupancy. We've talked about it for a long time. So, I hope we can move forward on that piece as well. But the other piece that, well, actually, there's two more, there's just so much here. So, addressing the need for a 24-hour facility, I think, is something that also is sooner rather than later and how we can continue to move to accomplish that. There are so many things that are happening in our community right now. And because of the pandemic, we have not been able to offer one of the things that was highlighted as, as a success story, which is, you know, the events that we would have on a more regular basis for ID, ID and, you know, getting everybody in the same room to be able to you know, getting everybody in the same room to be able to provide the documents and the things that people need to be able to move forward. And, you know, we just haven't been able to do that because of the pandemic. And so being put in a position finally to make that available, not on a quarterly basis, but on a daily basis, to me, that's a huge step forward. And just having a place, a place for people to find these services during the day. And we have wonderful partners right now that are doing that work, but we're not, we're not able to address it in a comprehensive holistic kind of way. So I think that's really critical and important. And the street outreach piece, I think, is also critically important. We know we have a lot of work to do there. And again, we have people in our community working tirelessly to do this work, but we need that street outreach piece with more people, more background, more ability to get them into wraparound services. So that's just a start.
As Councilmember Hall has been discussing for a long, long time, it's where are those gaps in what the continuum is doing? And lo and behold, the first product from Home Base was that gap analysis. And it's, it's a thing y'all know, and we got to start putting it on paper. And then, you know, the strategic plan on how do we start checking those off our list of needs?
I think 718 North Porter gives me a lot of hope for making real progress. And I will point out that of all of the, the geo-bonds that we put forward back in last, god, a year ago now, last August, the most successful one, even though it did fail, was addressing homelessness. And it was $5 million, but without a plan. Now, we're on our, on our way to a plan where if we had $5 million, in addition to what we're already looking at, it'd be a game changer. In the U.S. Conference of Mayors call today, Mayor Adler from Austin, which is struggling with homelessness issues as well, said that they're collaborating with, it was either the state or the county, and they're both putting in $200 million. So almost, yeah, almost $400 million to, to take this problem on. We're obviously not as big as Austin, and the problem is obviously not as, as big, but there is a problem. And we're, I love the, the step and the guidance. I think that'll help us make strategic decisions in addressing a very important quality of life human issue. And we just need to make sure that, again, we're, we're stretching our dollars as far as we can because we have an opportunity to make a real difference. Councilmember Hall?
So just on a really practical basis and timeline related as to how we move forward. So my understanding from what you've said today is going to be a few more weeks and then we're going to have another opportunity to see the entire report. The other thing I was really struck with that was mentioned really from a couple of different angles is the community engagement piece. And so I'm wondering if we can start thinking about what that's going to look like between now and the next time that we gather as a council because I think it's really important to say out loud that we do focus most of the services that are available in the core, in Core Norman, in Ward Four. And there are a lot of people in Ward Four that I think would benefit from outreach, education, you know, understanding what's going on, what the timeline for it is to be because all of these things also impact neighborhoods and people who live in Norman. And so I think it's going to be really important as we roll this out and establish priorities to reach out deep into our community, to be able to talk about this and to invite them to be part of it because I think knowledge is power. And the more you know about what's going to happen and the more you can anticipate, you know, who, who are the folks that I can talk to if I have concerns, I think that's going to go a long way to gathering support within the community for how we're going to move forward.
It's funny you mention that. A week ago, I was telling the city manager, we need to get everyone in the same room and start talking. So already working on it.
The, the beauty of a consultant group like Home Base that has been in the business for 30 years and coast-to-coast, our ability to say, we need help with X, and ask them to draw upon their resources and experience and find out who did X great. And our, our ability not to have to recreate every single one of those wheels, but to be able to grab the best pieces of wheels that Home Base knows are out there, I think really accelerate our ability to start making an impact. So we appreciate their expertise.
And the other thing I'm hoping that we can share with the community as these projects move forward, we have, there are so many of our major partners in addressing these issues that have new master plans coming forward, new plans to identify other parts of our community as a result of the pandemic, that, you know, their, their focus has shifted a little bit on the direction that they want to go. I'm thinking, I'm thinking of, of healthcare. We have, you know, a partner that really wants to come forward and be part of the Porter campus that's been part of the plan for several years now. So we have nonprofits who are really being intentionable, intentional about, intentional about how they move forward with what they've seen during the pandemic and how their focus needs to shift and the kind of capital needs that they have and support from the community that they need as well. So we have, you know, a lot of exciting plans in the pipeline. It's not just all the city of Norman. We, there's no way we can do this by ourselves. There's no way we can do this without all of the partners that have done this work for so many years. So I think, you know, giving the opportunity to our community to understand how many people are devoting their resources, their time, their talent to reduce homelessness in Norman.
And on the 19th, an update from the State Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse on 988, the people they've hired, the RFPs out in process. It definitely fits a, a key component to what Home Base is identifying. So we'll bring you that update on the 19th.
And I'm really hoping that through this process in December and as we're talking about ARPA funding, that we can also address short-term solutions that we can put in place from now until when the long-term solutions are coming onboard. Because we have the need now, yesterday, the day before.
Councilwoman Shuddling?
All right. I have lots. So I'm glad that you said that you talked to him a week ago about getting all the people at the table because the three of us talked to him about three months ago about that same conversation. So I am curious where you're at in that getting not just the COC partners, but our faith-based communities and other outreach communities or outreach, outreach businesses in our community that want to help do this work. Have you started that process since we've talked about that a few months ago?
Just started that process, looking at some blueprints for similar activities that the mayor's identified through what, which, one of those groups that you're a part of with all these mayors that were experiencing similar circumstances, the agendas they established and the partners they invited, yeah, that go far beyond the continuum of care, including advocacy groups, faith-based partners, local business owners, and of course, some of the providers that are already in the service. So we're trying to get that on the schedule to facilitate here at City Hall.
And in that same meeting that we had a few months ago, we also talked about a database that's more robust, which oddly enough, they had mentioned as well. And where are you at in finding that app or trying to create that?
So the, and this is a great conversation to have with the folks at Home Base and, and in our conversations with HMIS, recognizing how proprietary it is and how confidential it is, the thought is the ability on Street Outreach to provide a vehicle through an app or some easy, it needs to be easy to do, where we can take data gathered by community members and get it into HMIS, some database where if we don't have you, we, we need to know, we need to know who you are and what your needs are so we can help you. And if you're not in HMIS, does that mean you don't exist? No. But HMIS, our understanding is it's locked down pretty tight and very few people have access to touch it or to add things to it or to even see it. That's our understanding. Home Base is that, tell us what you've seen in other communities related to that type of access.
Well, I can talk a little bit about communities that have gotten broader than HMIS in order to bring more people in and still honor the confidentiality of HMIS. And there's things called community information exchanges or even shared information exchanges where they do data sharing agreements across agencies or even with the broader community that have special releases from the people who are getting served. And there's clear communication that, hey, this is in your interest for us to share broader because we'll be able to do a better job coordinating, collaborating to help get you safely housed or provide you the health insurance you need or make sure when you're discharged from the jail, you have a place safely to land. And we just came out with a report and Michelle has a copy of that report about some of the communities that are doing that, literally, I think it was last week. So she can probably share that with you all who are doing some of that.
Timing is everything.
Can we get that report?
Absolutely.
I'll let Carolyn answer.
Well, and, and the thought that, you know, when, when we hear a presentation, we say, says the attorney, that we recognize such paperwork doesn't exist and the ability to have persons being included in the information gathering process, recognize that if they will allow us to gather that information outside of HMIS, that such systems do exist. And once again, another wheel we would not create from scratch, we would figure out who has such a wheel and language that's already been, you know, reviewed by attorneys who says, yes, this information, it's not HIPAA, and with their permission, you can share with the goal. So thank you for providing that.
Yep. Another thing I was curious about was you had mentioned an environmental scan. What exactly does that entail?
So that's our initial review of data and documents of, from the community. So we'll look at your, basically, housing inventory counts, point-in-time counts, your continuum of care applications. So a lot of data that's pre-existing in the community, we'll look at the minutes from your city council meetings or your other, you know, homeless-related meetings, any homeless and housing plans in the community. So basically, we do a kind of a scan of anything housing and homeless-related that gives us the context for us to do the analysis. And sort of, and we try to do that prior to doing the qualitative work, which is when we begin the community engagement. So that when we start doing interviews and surveys, we know what to ask. So that as we're meeting with people, we can ask them about trends we see in the data or things that we see. So that we can ask people, you know, questions that are relevant to the trend. So when we show you some of the graphs and charts and things, and we start to see, you know, why did things go up at this certain time, we can ask the question so that someone can tell us, oh, well, we did, we really changed the point-in-time count methodology that year. So that's how we learn those kinds of things. But first, by studying and sort of developing those, you know, charts and graphs and doing all that analysis and doing that whole scan is how we start a whole analysis in the community. And then we do the qualitative portion where we do the interviews and the surveys and the focus groups.
Okay. And then I wanted to also bring up that I find it interesting that you guys talked about a mobile crisis unit when coincidentally enough, this council set aside money to do that. And 988 is not going to be able to fill some of those gaps as it relates to homelessness and outreach. And I think that that's something that this council can definitely consider to use that money for, to fill that gap. And it's something that we can do quickly since it's in our budget and we can get it going. So I would like to see some additional information about that in a future meeting if that's possible.
Absolutely.
In regards to cost of van, what that looks like in other cities maybe. Yeah, so I would like to do that. And then the other thing I just want to mention is I'm really grateful that you guys did this. I do think that it's unfortunate that we've paid for this same study twice now. And I hope that we actually implement the things that we've learned here tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding this initial report? All right. Seeing none, that's it for tonight. This meeting is adjourned.